Upwards of eighty-five thousand dollars worth of lien notices today. There might be people who there's gonna be a lien in one month's time, which are gonna be twenty-twenty-two P-one and twenty-twenty-two P-two. Send those out, yeah? While I was sending them out, I also sent out notice this too, you can see on the back of it. One for Cleveland, there's one for Daniel, and there's one for Marley. Show where they are with their taxes. P one's gonna be sometime late spring, I don't know.
And at some point in time. Put some ideas on the one that they are looking at some other tax court as well, do some idea how to work with this one. They don't communicate.
Not communicate. Which one's? You see them all now?
This is several pictures of. And you can also update up the reelection?
Nope, everybody got sworn except for one library, just so she was even noticing that to be honest.
And they send the no files from Secretary of State on the election. Do you have any questions for?
I do now.
Good job, cool. Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, I will, don't you worry.
John?
Well, we had a little snowstorm in the air, called Sage. Kept us a little busy. Well, the trucks went down in the first run, main hydraulic one.
Which one?
The newer international. Were able to shut the pumps off, and he dragged the plow back. Two boys worked together, and we had one on the shelf. And then we had a rain spring breaker, the Freightliner, which is one big guy's. But that fixed it early in the storm. Last round was four AM, we had T-one, the older international, down. Soon as it warmed up, it was like turning P off. And T-three went down, the other international. And later it was diagnosed fuel pump issue. They worked on those trucks today, at the garage. T-one was back up running, but at the end of the day, it had an engine light on. T-three, we never got running. So that's going on, I hope, and we'll go down on it at some point. We still have some tree debris around the town, and we'll be spring cleanup at this point. We're starting mud season again. Sorry, it was out, we're trying to make around, smooth out some of the boggles that we got going on. I called the pony, because our meeting, bought a truck, so alright, thank you.
Thank you for all your talking.
The one that we saw on the website is not available.
Yeah, John and I had a discussion, you can order trucks. It's like his, or it only allows ordering fleet trucks, every so often, just like fire. So, the concern is, he was told that October might be when he can order, October. So I said, well, let's, let's look at something that they got on the lot, if it's not the right color, so be it. Because that's really, you know. So we found some stock trucks on the pony, one at Erwin's.
Erwin's was a gas job.
Gas, and then Hillsborough didn't have anything, we had used one, but it had a long, long company. John was gonna call around to see what they had, if they had, if they were still on the lot, what they were. He's come set up with anything, or are they just, just plow trucks, and you put the plow on them?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to buy a cabin chassis, and then a hot bear field out there. So that's pretty much holding up with me, unless you want to discuss dump hours?
Yep, I got a couple more things, transfer station hours. We, there are a bunch of blocks, we, with the new baler that's gonna be coming, we felt that with the added work, baling cardboard and paper and plastic and the new baler, we wouldn't be able to accomplish that during normal work hours. So we felt we're gonna have the guys come in on Tuesday, and work from noon time until seven, and then open the transfer station from three to seven, or four to seven, similar to Wednesday. So we'd have Saturday all day, then Tuesday in the evening, and then Wednesday in the evening, evening. And that would give the crew a chance, it would take some of the pressure off Wednesday night and Saturday, but it would also give the crew a chance to bail everything. Because the baler's gonna be on the main floor of the building, and we're not gonna be able to operate it during regular open hours. It's just not feasible to have a piece of equipment like that running, and while people are walking around and stuff like that, so. So John asked me, hey, what are we gonna do about hours, since the baler isn't there? I told him we should discuss it tonight. I don't know, right now, we still don't have a transfer station manager. We're paying either overtime or labor ready, which is about the same amount of money. And I don't know that we can afford to do that as well as run the Tuesday night operation with extra day, and still have to pay for cardboard and plastic and all that. Once we get the new baler online, the hope is that we'll be getting some money back. And that even though it goes into the enterprise fund and doesn't pay for wages, it's kind of left pocket, right pocket. We are getting money back, it goes into town funds, even though we're still spending more than what we've already spent. So I told John that I would bring it up tonight, and see how you guys felt about it, and hope there.
Do we have any idea when the service is gonna go?
So I talked to the electrician that Atlantic Recycling uses today, it's Levitt Electrical. They have a four-hundred amp meter socket, but it does not come with a disconnect. But the electrician said he has a disconnect that he can add to the side of it. So, our fairness to Larry Martin, who we really contracted to do the job, I called Larry, and he's on vacation until Wednesday. So he texted me back and said, I'm on vacation till Wednesday, can I just call you that? And I'm like, yes, please. Have a good vacation and go. The latest he had, he had let me know about three weeks ago, that his supplier told him it would be within the next couple months, that they, the next, his meter socket that he ordered in August shouldn't be yet within the next couple months. Electrician I talked to today, he said, yep, he said, they're telling me a year, if I wanna order new one. He said, and I, and then Larry had said in August, when we ordered, he said, I don't know when I'm gonna be able to get it. He said it's gonna be a while, and I talked to another electrician, I don't know, a couple months ago, and he said, yep, they told him fifty-five weeks, so, which is a year, you know, a little over a year. So that, it's, they explained it to me, I said, why, what's going on? And it's, you know, the old factory there, where they manufacture the majority of them, the people went on strike, and then when they came back from strike, there were back orders and, you know, supply chain issues and all of all that. So, I'm waiting till Wednesday, when Larry gets back. I don't know if he, Unitil has specific rules on what can be done. If he feels that Unitil will allow this to go up there with a separate disconnect, then my thought is, we'll just go ahead and buy it, we're not gonna wait. And I don't know what Larry's supplier is gonna do, obviously, if there's such a demand for them, they'll just bump it to the next person in line. I don't, I don't know that we'll get a restocking charge or anything like that. So, wait till Larry gets back, Wednesday or Thursday, I'm sure I'll hear from him, and we'll be there. The baler is, the baler is all set in, sitting at Atlantic Recycling's warehouse. The guy Todd Hager that is gonna install it, the sales guy, said, once I let him know that the, they don't wanna bring it till the electricity's there. He said, once it is, let him know, or once we have a date that it's gonna be installed, let him know, he'll schedule it. And he said, probably two weeks notice is more than enough time for him to get it scheduled to be installed, so.
Ken, have you seen the, physically, how big is it?
The baler?
Yeah.
He gave us all the measurements and everything. It's, yeah.
Gonna fill that inside corner there, well, the.
Yeah, the plan is.
Through on the eye.
Yeah, so the, the plan is to put it as you're driving out, on the left-hand side.
Yeah.
There's a panel there now. The baler itself has to have, two feet of clearance on the back. So, which is, which is enough to put it by that panel.
Yep.
So, Larry has everything else, he's got all the conduit, all the wire, everything, other than just the meter socket. And the switch, so. And the new poles are all run, and it's a matter of getting that meter socket in, calling Unitil, having them run the line, the lineup, getting it all installed, and, you know, so that's pretty much it. So, hold off on those hours until we get that new baler?
Yes, yes.
John, one of the things, the budget, that we had in the budget, was the replacement of the flagpole down in the center.
Okay.
So, that base that's there now is gonna have to come out of there. And I, can I give you the information, because we're gonna have to pour another base and put a sleeve in it? I have the flyer from the company that we're getting the flagpole from, and I'll give that to you, so you can get all the information to know how deep we're gonna put it, and get a sleeve from them, and so, I'll get that to you.
Looks like the stake's still out there, too, for where to put it.
For this part.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think Neil and everybody had more or less agreed on where to put it.
That's the one behind the monument.
Right, behind the monument. And then John was gonna check with Ching Sa Doctor on a new zero-turn mower.
Okay.
He had talked to him, and we had gotten an estimate, when we did the warrant article, and John talked to him, and the price might actually be a little cheaper than what.
Yeah, it went down like five hundred.
Oh, really?
So.
Have we started looking for a lawnmower guy yet, or?
Hoping.
Bogdan will come back.
Hoping Bogdan will come back. He, he, since last year, he was hoping to come back this summer.
Good, he had a good job, I thought.
Yep, yep. That's, that's all I got to you, John.
Okay.
Well, so, Ken and I talked earlier today, there's a, there's a fairly deep, I don't, I don't wanna call it manhole, but whatever it's called, they're drained right there beside the edge of the common, goes across into the cemetery. Is that something that we could get the state to come fix, because it's, it's kind of dangerous.
I'll ask Brian about it.
Okay. Well, we've got the monument, and then you go up to the edge of the common, and that's right there on the edge, and it's probably what?
That's, that's one of their structures.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if they could raise it up, at least it will agree, height or whatever we need to do to get it to drain.
It would be nice.
It would be nice.
We catch a plow on sometimes.
Do you?
It's a good rock.
Alright.
Do you have anything else for us?
No.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Mike?
I'll be quick. So I tried to save a little bit of paper for you. Would you put it all on one page or? Last month, this month, so you can tell which.
Explain that too, though.
Well, that's because you guys would like to schedule, so I had to give you the schedule. So the schedule's under that. Vincent's on vacation a couple weeks, he's going to Kenya. We'll have most of that covered, so that's not big, it should be covered, for the most part, a lot of overtime, Chris is gonna pull up some of those. You know, where we work, the schedule's a little bit, but we're just waiting for Chris to confirm what she wants to do. Numbers are a little low, but we didn't meet that long ago, so. That's why it is what it is. But then eventually, winter for the most part, through accident scene or near, nothing crazy. We did catch a simple, or sexual assault last week, and the week before, that we'll work on, so that's gonna be a little bit kind of concerning. We did ask state police to kind of take it over, but they're twenty deep. So, they'll help us, but it's on our shoulders, so we'll go on that. Unfortunately, we had to go a little bit to Vermont for that, so that was a two-and-a-half hour ride up, and the lieutenant might be attached just by now.
This is in relation to the? Why do we have to come all the way up there?
Had to do with the victim. We do whatever CSC says, and they set it all up wherever they set it up.
Yeah.
We have to go. So usually it's right around Concord area, but this happened to be in Vermont. Well, that, if that, that won't be, no, no malfunctions or problems.
Nice job on the, taking care of the town meeting the other night.
It was tough, but.
I know.
I know.
Pretty unruly.
I almost had to look at you once, to make sure that.
Was he awake, or?
John, because he had a long day, he was nodding off, and I was gonna go.
Now, yeah, it was, between the voting and Tuesday, about half, it was very difficult.
Did you see the Facebook post?
I did, for Officer Karate.
One nice post. It really was, it was nice to see.
Yeah, we printed it off, that portion, and then put it in this hall. And it's always good to see. I asked him if he was too nice.
I'm sure he said no.
No, it's good to see.
It is good, yeah.
And even standing at tolls all day Tuesday, I can see it on my mind, so that's always good.
Couldn't come outside, and we're complaining.
It was a little cold outside, I don't want to get cold.
It was wet, cold.
I looked outside, you looked cold, figured, we were inside.
We were inside.
We were inside, all bright and warm, and.
Every time I looked at the window, somebody was looking back and laughing.
I wouldn't ever laugh at you, never.
Somebody was.
Were you inside, like, snowing inside?
It was, I'm literally still a little wet standing by the window.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks chief.
Thanks.
Excuse us.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Wow, hello there. Congratulations.
Thank you, nice to see you.
Nice to see you, and congratulations on a beautiful meeting. I couldn't worry about it, could you? I couldn't. It was beautiful, well done. Really, really great meeting, so, nothing really to report here. Trying to return to select meetings. We really have kind of a slow time right now, in terms of reporting what we're up to. We do have a new Friends of the Library group, whole new leadership, so we've got some new energy, and we saw them at the back of the room, led by Denise Fisher, who's doing a great job, and Jesse Tishko. And as you know, they supplement a lot of our budget, so they're a real valuable team. We've had really great luck, we've, the Friends bought us a new projector, I had gotten a great first sound system, and Zach Bacon has been doing electrical work for us, and doing a great job. I think I'm gonna sweep by another here on the painting. I really don't think I need to do, it doesn't look that bad. So, I'm not gonna really worry about that, and I'm waiting for another bid from, on the back door, from the Historical Society. So in terms of maintenance on the outside of the building, again, I would thank you for the use of the town hall, that is working out great for our programs, and I've been talking a little bit with Robin on the mornings after, to make sure that I'm leaving it the way she expects it to be.
Yeah, and on that note, I contacted Larry Kanafka, about what we're doing on the floor over there. He's gonna call me back, I'm gonna catch up with him Wednesday, and he's gonna schedule it in. I will give you a heads up on that.
No, excuse, because I've got questions.
And I'm sure it'll be two or, two or three days that he'll have to be in there. So, I'll, I'll talk with him and see what his schedule looks like, and then I'll look at what we have, and talk to you, and try and come up with a week that we all agree that we can not have to use it.
That would be great, and I was so excited to read that warrant article, because that, I use it a lot. So I appreciate that, yeah, I'm pretty heavy in April, but of course you'll have to get it done before.
When I talked to him last May, he was scheduling to November. So, I think we'll have some flexibility of enough warning that he's starting to say, well, I'll be there next week. I don't think so, I'm guessing he'll say, yeah, well, how's September, Rockover Sound?
Okay, well, that'd be good.
I'll let you know.
Yeah, it would be good after the fair, wouldn't it, so it could, it could really kind of harden up all winter. And on that note, the farmers market is very generous with their contribution to the library for paper goods, so I've been, because Dad isn't refilling the toilet paper anymore, I've been bringing my paper products over there, just because we're, we're sharing it, so I'm happy to do that, because it's. And at some point, the trustees would love to have you, Scott, or existing in the select board, to come to our trustees' meeting.
Love to.
Okay.
You have to swing in the line.
Okay.
So you wanna be a representative for us, and put your vote back?
I will gladly do that, yeah, and you've got my town email, I think.
I think I probably.
Yeah, yeah, you've got, yeah, and I know you've got contact info, yeah, so, so whatever works for you.
Okay. Ken is around enough, he knows the lay of the land.
Well, I haven't been invited yet, so can I come along with Scott?
Absolutely, absolutely.
See what this is all about?
Absolutely, it's a free and open public meeting.
Good.
So that would be a good idea, and we'll just, just, we'll just go over library governance as it relates to, obviously, eleven and the body process. So, it would just be good to get in the practice.
Agreed, yeah.
Do you have any questions? Do you get minutes, do you have minutes of your library trustee?
Yes.
Is that something? I don't know. The inter, you, you have them posted anywhere?
Yeah, we have them posted, and then they're officially displayed, and then.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
One thing I was thinking about, part of the problem that's occurring on the, on the floor is the water coming in on people's feet. And everybody seems to pretty much come in through the ramp and then down the hallway. How's the floor there, is that going alright, or is it gonna have?
Yeah, that hall floor is fine, yeah.
Is it? Because I was thinking, if we put a, you know, a rug right down there.
We can get some more, some of the heavy-duty carpets like we have up at the town office.
Yeah.
Okay.
That might help, just.
Yep, I'll get that.
Because it seemed to be right in front of where you were checking in, and then it actually went around the corner to the booth, so.
Sure.
Voting day, or the highway could put some, seven months, that happens a lot.
Yeah, the big, they have the big heavy-duty rubber mats in the hall, those are always there. I don't think we have anything in front of that door.
You mean, the front door? Well, people are going out that way, especially during the voting, but. The other thing is, I've gotta get in there, Evan pointed out that we've got a couple of boards on that, you know, where you sit up on that, those seats along the side, and there are a couple up, I think.
Punch down.
Are punched down, so I thought I'd go in and see if I could pull them out, get them back up, and the, the other thing that's happening, I don't think, I tried it, but the door going into the far bathroom is, is, it's sagging on its hinges, so I thought I'd pull it back.
I didn't notice that.
Yeah, you can't open it, it's, you know, it's rubbing pretty hard, so I'll, I'll go in there and do both those things.
But it's a really great building, I mean, it's really just made after all of its years, and the organization of the backstage, and Larry doing the lights, and you're doing the front lines, it's really, it's a, it's a viable place to, to rush back.
Nice to see, used.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be right back. Actually, we should extend an invitation right now, our next trustee is meeting, well, besides this one, is April seventeenth, Monday, if that isn't Monday, the problem is, they coincide with this meeting.
Yeah.
But we start at six. So, we could always get some of our business, and then have a, over after that.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, a little bit too sunny. We have an accounts payable manifest in the amount of forty-four thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty cents.
So.
Second?
Kamaj down on vacation still, or?
Yes, yeah, I think he's got another week. Yeah, yeah, I think they generally open a couple of weeks.
Yep.
Good for him.
Yes. Did you let him know about the town meeting?
He, he literally, he was waiting.
I didn't get anything from him, so I figured you had a contract.
That was a good presentation, you doing, answering questions, I think.
I just tried to, you know, stick with the facts and no drama, so.
I think that, that stopped a lot of questions. And next, we have a payroll manifest in the amount of forty-three thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars, forty-nine cents.
Second? I was teaching Toby yesterday on my plane.
Yes, do this, like, you can.
That was my suggestion, exercise.
I think he's talking about that one. Okay, later, if you want to, or if needed. You just don't have to make a motion decided. Pardon? You still have to make a motion decided, I can explain it later. A welfare manifest in the amount of one thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars.
Second?
A minute spring with a paper seal.
Not bridge. Okay, we have. Okay, we have.
I have that contract for, um, the tree here. This is the annual treatment for, for the quiche mill. It's six hundred and sixty dollars. In the past, you guys have authorized me to sign it.
Yes.
So it's just that, it's, uh, there's a soil treatment, and then a spring soil care fertilization. So the total is six hundred and sixty dollars.
So you can, is that okay with you?
It is, I think we're gonna have to start looking at that tree though carefully, 'cause it's, it's looking pretty raggedy around the edges. I don't know how you do them, how long they last.
When, when Barton comes out to treat it, they usually look at it and make suggestions whether, whether there's dead limbs that need to be trimmed back, or something like that, that's what happened last year, we ended up spending more money on it to, to have some dead limbs taken out before the fair. Uh, 'cause they were concerned when they came out and saw that, that there were some limbs up there, they were, they were worried about it, so. But, um, they've been doing it for as long as I remember.
They skyward cushion them when he was alive, or?
Uh, yeah, actually, they did. They did, yeah, yeah, and the fellow that does the, we work with, Joe Davis, has been working for Barton for twenty-five years or something, so. He's very experienced with that, so.
Kushman used to pay for it.
Yeah, he did, yeah. Alright, so you'll authorize me to sign, whoever's signing this for you?
Okay.
Yes, okay.
And next, we have the veterans' tax credit from, just two of them. For tax net. Twenty-twenty, I mean, two-hundred-and-twenty at lot one, and another one for tax net, two-twenty-four lot seven.
Are these new ones?
Yeah, no one else. On these, Scott, those two places, just on. Don't do it, careful, hold on.
I do.
Ken, are these, the DD two-fourteens, are they reviewed by Sam, or?
No, Manny.
Oh, she does.
Manny does that.
Yeah.
Yeah, any of the exemptions, Manny goes to Manny.
Okay.
As the assessor.
Yep.
This is the last one, that was all one, the one exemption. Did we miss the party for sperm?
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Oh, man.
Next year.
Next year, post-party, post-party.
I guess now it's official.
Right.
It's gone.
Thank you.
Yep.
And next, we have a yield tax warrant on tax net two oh five lot two, and two oh eight lot six. Does it say where we are? He's in the amount of ninety-four seventy, ninety-four dollars and seventy cents.
A big one. Has to take in the maple tree down.
Is that a supplemental or something, or?
Uh, no, I don't know, Dr. Liverpool can start it.
Yeah, it is.
Is that his, his big one?
Probably, whatever it was, I don't know what it was.
Yeah. Not much. Wasn't it mentioned at town meeting, he's doing some kind of a, a trust or something, or something?
Yeah, I do, um, land preservation, some of it.
Conservation, is that?
Conservation.
Where's that?
Where?
Bill John Dodd, John Dodge, probably.
Oh, I don't know. The Bill, I don't know.
Next, we have a, a memo from Andy Urban regarding, um, religious exemption.
This for the Quaker?
Yes.
This is the first time they've asked for this, or is it something new?
It's something new than these, don't you? Yeah, it, it says, yeah, recently, there have been a few towns taken to the Board of Tax and Land Appeals regarding charitable and religious exempted properties. The board is finding that towns are lacking in oversight of these exempted properties, and that many are not receiving the required home flatlands each year, yet they are still exempting the properties. Canterbury has five properties that receive these institutional exemptions, and fortunately, we tend to receive the paperwork each year without much hassle. However, under the advisement of the Board of Tax and Land Appeal, I have implemented the recommended worksheet that I will fill out, and would like you to sign them, would like them signed by the selectmen. On the paper?
I am.
I think this is just going to be after sign. So you've never signed?
I don't remember any. This is, yeah, and this is a pro, this is really for the process that you're signing for.
Yep.
We typically, we typically receive the, the exemption reports or the exemption, um, application. And if we don't, Manny tries to follow up, and if she doesn't get any success, then it comes up to my office. We've had it mentioned a couple times to a couple different ones, that you're exempt, and you have to fill out the paperwork, if you wanna stay exempt, you still do have to fill out the paperwork, so. This is a worksheet, and it'll be easier to keep track of things.
Is it a yearly thing?
There's only five of them, um, so it's, instead of just having to remember every year, this is just gonna make it a process a bit simpler.
This will be a yearly thing?
Well, it is already a yearly thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
That's what the, would that number change?
We're not trying that close to the downline.
Yes, it is. Oh, is our whole sign? Thank you. No, minutes. It's attached here.
One paper. Must have been late at night.
Anybody see some verbiage or spells?
No, I'm just kidding.
Have a motion?
So we'll.
Second.
I've been a little abstained from voting since I was here.
Anytime you see any misspellings, or, or you think some of the verbiage should be different.
Yep.
All in paper?
My. Looks like we've got an election coming up, eh?
Yeah.
You gonna talk to us, tell us which of the programs the next year?
I have, I have no program, I've been chairman before, and I hope to, um, just move forward and make sure that we all, all are aware of everything that needs to be done, and work together well. And I think the best thing is communication. And, as you know, we normally would only be communicating internally. If either of you have an issue with employees, or something you see, town administrator, report to him, he can play it. If it's something serious, then we would have a meeting.
Yep.
But other than that, we have a lot of rules and regulations at work, and you know that.
Yep.
And you do too, so.
I nominate Cheryl for the new chairman of the select board for nineteen, nine, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. Say nineteen.
Paul, what's your opinion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Um, I have, uh, a couple of things for new business that aren't on the agenda.
Alright.
Uh, really have to do with follow up with the town meeting, um, just kinda report who we are. Record articles, um, I contacted the HVAC company about the, uh, air conditioner, the mist building and the missile building. Haven't heard back yet, but I let him know that the record article's passed, and to let me know when he thinks he can start work, or if he needs anything else. I, let's see, we already talked about the town hall floor, and the mower, and the F five fifty. Think that's pretty much it from town meeting stuff. I have a dredge and fill wetlands permit application completed and approved by DES for Eversource, they're gonna be replacing, looks like all of the wooden structures on their transmission line, that comes from Franklin, Canterbury, and the Conker, uh, in parts of Northfield. So, um, that's here, if anybody wants to see it, um.
Just the tent high tension lines that come up through?
Yeah, down on West Road, across West Road, yeah, by the, the shooting range there, um, so.
I see somebody's been in the Maxfield property with a big skid steer or something.
Yeah, they.
John, I'm gonna do it, maybe you know?
Yeah, this is the, this is the location here, it just shows it starts here in Franklin, goes down through Northfield, um, and Canterbury has, has the most, uh, wooden structures that are gonna be replaced, and then down with the Conker, so. It's here, it's got all the reports from every agency that is involved, if anybody, I'll have it at the town office, and make sure the Conservation Commission sees it, um, and just let all the planning board and everybody else know that it's here, but the office, if anybody wants to look at it.
Ken, just curious, are they replacing the wood structures with new wood structures?
Yes, yeah, they're, some of the wood structures are not laminated, and they're replacing all of those with laminated ones. They're actually gonna replace some of the laminated ones also, uh, not with steel, but with more laminated wood structures, is what it said in there.
Those aren't that old, are they?
I don't believe so, I don't know whether they're making them taller, or I started to get into this and got involved with the next subject, which is the PFAS subpoena. So, I, I, I started going through this and got through part of it, and then got a phone call, and, and started working, had to work on that subpoena. Which, update, I completed, uh, our attorneys sent us an email last week saying that, uh, out of the forty-eight, um, I guess, items that, uh, that the attorneys are looking for, uh, they had identified, um, thirty-something of them as priority. And, uh, our, our law firm, our counsel, is filing a motion to object, uh, because they feel it's, um, way too much information that's rarely available to the state, uh, DES. But I was able to complete several of those, and talked to our attorney today, and they said, send it to them, and they will forward it to McLean Middleton out of Manchester, they'll review what I put together, and if they feel it needs any more detailing like that, they'll let me know. So, uh, the deadline is the twenty-second, it was originally the twenty-second. Our attorney filed a motion two weeks ago, or whatever it was when we first got this, because the timeline is so short, and they got an extension to the thirtieth, um, so we. Um, so we filed, contacted our attorney and sent him that information to them today with the priority questions and hopefully we'll get that off and then start working on the rest of the information. I don't, our attorney said that they don't know when they'll get back from the judge on the motion to object on the totality of all the information that they're requesting. Uh, he feels it will be within the next couple of weeks before the deadline. Um, so, um, hopefully the judge will come back and say, no, just go to the DS and request all the paperwork from them. Don't go to the individual towns and, and, uh, request anything from them.
So why did you say there were?
Forty-eight, forty-eight items that are being requested. And they're all very similar in nature. It's, it's, they're requesting communications and documentation with anything that we've ever had to deal with since two thousand seventeen, since we were first notified by DS on PFAS up at the transfer station. And any records that we may have of trainings, um, because a lot of it is found in firefighting foam, trainings, fires that might have been up there where they used it, anything like that. Um, so, I met with Dale Caswell and Chief Gamache last, last week, before last week. Yeah, I think it was last, yeah, last week, last Monday and, um, Dale has been going through a lot of their own records up there. They didn't use the National Fire Incident Reporting Software or reports until they started applying for grants, which was, I think the first grant that they got was a rescue truck, um, for that. So that's when they started using that, that reporting. Before that, they had basically a ledger and they had recorded all the calls they went on. So there's nothing electronic and Dale has been going through a lot of his own records. Um, as a project that he's been doing, not necessarily related to this, but since this came up, he's been looking for it and he hasn't found anything. Um, so, uh, one of the things that I talked to today about the attorney was that part of the documents and the records that communications they may be wanting is bits of selectance meetings, planning board meetings, zoning board meetings that refer to PFAS. So, as we're talking about it tonight, this will be recorded in the minutes and this may be information that they wanna hear. Um, so we're gonna start trying to find records of anything, selectance meetings and going back to two thousand seventeen. And I'll notify the planning board and ZBA and conservation and, you know, the other boards and committees that if they know of any, uh, times that they discussed it, that please let me know and, um, hopefully one of the objections that's filed is to have the, um, law firm that's represented three M, uh, search records instead of us having to search records. So we would provide them with your records. Uh, and all of our agendas and meeting minutes are recorded and, but let them come in and look at all of them instead of us having to do online. So, we'll see how that goes. Uh, let's see. The other, uh, thing I have, if you guys are new business, I was contacted by DocuSign and I don't know if you guys, we've signed documents electronically before, but less likely now. Pretty much anybody that's been doing business, whether it's a sale or a vehicle or anything like that, uh, a lot of it is being electronically signed. Uh, I was contacted by them to see if we are interested in signing up for that service. Um, sat through a webinar, a presentation with them. Um, it's expandable, it's cloud-based. The billing is based on number of envelopes. An envelope is, when you send a document to somebody to sign, that's considered an envelope. That envelope contain, can contain multiple documents. You only build on the number of envelopes you use. Um, their starting plan is for five hundred envelopes at three thousand two hundred fifty dollars a year. I talked to, uh, Sam, Tom Burke and Mandy and Jan and Mary and we discussed how many documents we may send. We could potentially send a year and we're possibly fifty and that's on the high end. So, I, I wouldn't recommend signing up for this service. Right now, what we'll typically do, similar to what part of the tree, responding to part of the tree, instead of doing electronic signature, um, I sign it, I scan it, I email it. And it works out fine. We have that ability. The only time we ever, the only time there's ever any time lag is if somebody, if we send something to somebody that they don't have the ability to sign it, stand it, you know, which isn't very often. So, um, I, I would recommend this. I think it's, it's way overkill for what we need to do and it's three grand that we don't have to spend.
There's nothing cheaper this year. Are they, there's nothing cheaper they offer?
No, no, their, they, their starting plan is, is three thousand dollars. So, and I explained to the people and they, they were good. They said, you know, how many documents? And what do you think you're willing to spend? And I said, well, we could probably find anywhere between five hundred and seven hundred and fifty dollars in this year's budget if we wanted to start. And they said, well, our plan started at three thousand. So, I said, well, probably that's not gonna happen. I said, but I'll wait until we're in the start. Um, that is all I have.
I have, um, a breathing committee. I'm, 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 you know, I've got, that's now is representative to fire department.
I'm just, I'm a group.
And, um, there's no conflict. It's a plan, you know. You gotta, you wanna stay on the planning board?
I was gonna make a list.
I can say now, what else is there? Cause Ken has been really, has a much longer continuity than I do.
Okay.
I, I'd like to stay on.
I understand. That's okay with me.
So you wanna, you're planning board? No, you're gonna stay on the planning board?
No, my term ended.
His term ended.
Oh, we didn't. Oh.
No.
And?
So we've got, uh, HDC, historic district. They need lots of money. I don't know if that'll continue. That was, at some point the next period of time, we need to sit down with them and talk to them about their new regulations.
Yeah, I had a good chat with Kevin at the polls and he said that the changes they make on that radical is just more in line. Cause I was asking him about the rules and rights for solar, historic, there's some, he said they have something that they were voting on. In a, in a, so, the HDC, uh, energy committee.
Energy.
And these, these are all advisory committees, so whatever you get from information, we're back to the conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's relatively simple to show up and you're supposed to.
Yeah.
I, I was asked not to become a chairman, so I stay away from that and that's, that's really the best way to do it.
Yeah, makes sense, yeah.
And the synergy, um, solid place?
Solid place.
And with, with that in mind, you're, you've been working solid place and transfer station.
Sure. Isn't that such an exciting?
Um, I, I, I can continue with the place and you want me to clarify?
I just kind of think I'm, uh, too much.
Okay.
Um, why, just like one.
You're doing, oh, he's got the transfer station and all that, so he kind of ties in. And, um, he's got the energy, uh.
You got conservation?
Oh, yeah, I'm on conservation.
Who's been on that? Oh, Bob. Bob was, Bob was.
And I don't know.
I don't know what to say.
I, I don't.
Yes. I don't, I don't see attending the.
I just forced a new guy.
Oh, it's up to you. Like to try and add some people on.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And that's, conservation. Because.
Right, yes, I mean, yes, yeah.
And um, school committee meeting.
School board committee, so.
Everybody just go down like this, please? Because I have, we don't, we're a really committee today and we don't know. When I talked to Bob, he wasn't quite sure when they're gonna be again.
Yeah, I think, I think my understanding is they have to form a new committee.
They do.
That the old committee was dissolved, they now have to form a new one.
That's the school board that does that.
Oh, okay.
But we were, wasn't he called out in the last, um, Warren article that we have two selectmen on in or?
Was just one. All the selectmen.
And. No, I mean one from each town.
Yes. Yes, one selectman from each town and then, um, representative from the general public each. So.
Member, okay. So I guess we.
But the school board, the school board handles sending out the committee, but we have to assign a selectmen's rep to, yeah.
You didn't say that in this year Warren article, did you? Is that something's carried on?
Uh, no, but it's, I mean, I, I can't imagine, it doesn't, it didn't list who the committee was going, going to be. Last year's Warren article did.
Yes.
But this one did not. So, I can't imagine them wanting a selectmen's rep.
Or what, or a lot of them, they don't change, you know, they change.
I can contact Mike Teresey and find out
Yeah.
about the school board, what they're, when they're gonna talk about it.
And then, then what?
Probably, probably wouldn't be a bad idea for somebody to attend that school board meeting, whether they're talking about it.
Okay, so we're.
I'll contact, I'll contact.
Want to let us know then?
I was the, uh, selectmen's rep to the Shore Forest group, which I don't want to do that again. You guys? I, I don't know if we're gonna have any meetings tomorrow. The reason I was. Huh?
I was thinking twice.
Yeah, we did that last year, but they also, um, I mean, they changed a lot of stuff last year, so that was a good meeting for us to be. I don't know what's gonna happen this year. They're losing Jones.
Yeah. I'm just, yeah. Cause he's the one.
He's the, yeah, he did a lot of work there.
Do you have community power?
Yeah, CCPC. I'll, I'll stay on.
Doesn't anyone want to jump in or something?
We're.
Go with HDC and energy.
HDC, energy, and I don't know, we've never had one, the rep for ag commission, but I don't know, um, I know they replaced some of their members this year.
Did they hold any meetings?
They did. They did. So we weren't at any, but, but I don't.
And should we have a rep, rep, ZBA, selectmen's rep?
There wasn't anybody last year.
I think usually we have. No.
Yeah, I don't.
And, and the other thing I, I was reading about is something to explore, is that maybe a collective position? Is something that you take two or three years to go in?
What's that?
ZBA, a lot of the towns starting to go to elective positions instead of. I'm thinking, yeah. So, um.
So we have HDC, somebody for HDC?
Cheryl, you don't have any yet? I don't know. I'm waiting on the school thing, cause everybody else is coming. Oh. I got the hazmat, the disaster plan, which reminds me, can't convert any kind of funding.
We're still waiting on that, that center.
It was, they went, it was sent, uh, the, the Bay to the state, it was supposed to have been sent by New Hampshire, I believe, but in January, it wasn't sent until February, February the second. I talked to Stephanie from Central Hampshire Planning Commission a few weeks ago and, um, she was hoping to hear from FEMA in the next month or so. She said, she hoped by April for us to hear. Um, we have hours expired a year ago in February.
Right.
So, um, it was, I think I explained it was a holdup at New Hampshire, Homeland Security, Risk Management because of the turnover, they had a lack of training, they didn't have anybody, so people pulled their ability to authorize or to certify the application. So they were able to review it, but they couldn't certify it. Which means that it got sent to FEMA uncertified, which, um, extends the process at FEMA, cause they have to certify it and then if there's any problems with it, they send it back. Um, usually any issues would be identified in Concord and sent back and we would fix those. Now it's reviewed in Concord. They did not find any issues that they could see, but they couldn't certify it and send it to FEMA.
Yeah.
They just had to send it along. Um, so we're waiting.
See if we get to do that all over again, or not.
Yeah, and I, so I don't know if you're aware, they changed, this is for the hazard mitigation plan. And they changed the, FEMA changed the format.
No, actually not at all.
So the original format from two thousand twelve is what we were working on there. And we were made aware last summer that if we didn't get it by January first, we'd have to go to the new two thousand twenty-three format, which is, uh, considerably different from what we had been doing. So we pushed our way through it. Um, we were supposed to have started back a year, over a year ago. But the grant money that paid, that pays, um, Central Hampshire Planning Commission didn't get through FEMA until late and then it had to be approved by the governor of council.
Yeah.
And that took six months. So by the time all the money got approved, we were already six months behind
Yes.
or a year behind what we were supposed to be doing. Um.
We started work, work.
We started, yeah, yeah. Um, so, so the process ends up, the problem is that if we apply for grants, particularly for, uh, um, enlarged culverts or bridge construction or anything like that, we're looking for any kind of federal money, we have to have a, a plan in place. We have to have a, a, a non-expire plan. So. I don't know what they're gonna do for the expiration date on this plan since ours expired a year ago in February. If they don't approve it until April or May, I don't know if they're gonna take that fourth year or that fifth year out or if they're just gonna give us five years for the data gets approved.
I hope so.
Hope so too. And we're not the only ones. I know that, um, the people over at Rocky Pond that are applying for the, the rebuilding that bridge, Culvert over there have applied for federal funding and part of that, that application is, is, has to do with having a, an in-place hazard mitigation plan. So, they're waiting on us too for that.
Yeah.
So it's kind of holding up the works for a couple of projects. But, all of that, it's at,
Yeah.
it's at FEMA now, so alls you can do is wait. So.
Is that going to head out there this year or Shore, uh, Forest, Rocky Pond?
Rocky Pond. As far as I know, they have applied for and received two grants. I don't know, and they've, they've gotten some funding from the people on the road. But other than that, I don't know, I don't know where they're at. With, and I don't know if they, I know they've got a lot of the engineering done, but I don't know if they have a construction company lined up and doing work on it.
They got Kim working on it, right?
Yeah.
So, mullered through.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you can, and on the school committee, you can let us all know, but I'll buy you the woman.
Nice, thank you.
That's like working on a hazard mitigation.
I know, it is. It won't let me in, so.
And, and, and I know Bell Moms gonna have a problem getting somebody.
Yeah, I don't think, uh,
No, you, I, no. Ruth isn't gonna do it. I don't know how many meetings I have, but?
Yeah, we're twelve, maybe. Yeah, do you want the, I've got all the minutes. Yeah, all the minutes.
I'll find one for it.
Sam made it up for me.
Oh, Mary's, yeah, I'd like to.
Yeah, it's interesting reading.
You look through it and you see all kinds of reasons.
I think it's actually a bridge. It's actually a bridge.
You know, there's a couple rings on it.
No. See, I bought this one, cause one year he bought me a chainsaw for Christmas, so I bought this one from him. Of course, I see everything.
Well, that's the one question, the, um, minutes, I just noticed. Uh, if you go to page two, line fifty-nine, where, um, we talked about, uh, state committee funding the program for round three. Is there a timetable for that? Uh, no, okay.
No.
Any guests still?
There was no timetable. Oh, and I, I will say that I submitted the, um, the submission for the newsletter.
Yeah.
I included a, a, a slurp on that.
Yeah.
Um, and, and for April's newsletter, I submitted and I asked, I explained that, that Consolidated got the contract.
Yeah.
Um, and that I suggested that people contact the state reps and find out why the state's bidding process allows only one company to, or they're only choosing one company instead of multiple companies for the broadband expansion. It just doesn't make financial sense for one company. Well, there was a, there was a article in, uh, one of the news things on, um, I don't know, NHMA or one of them. They listed all the towns that Consolidated is going to expand broadband in.
Yeah.
And most of them, between them and the co-op, most of them there are in the northern part of the state and the western part of the state. There are none in the central part of the state. Um, and, and it makes no financial sense for the state to award all this money to one company when there's multiple companies that represent. And I know in the southern part of the state and, and towns like ours, Loudon, Pittsfield, this whole capital region has towns that have partial service. And none of these companies, either the co-op or, 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 or Consolidated are gonna come in and reduplicate efforts, uh, spend money when there's already infrastructure in place. So they're gonna hit all the towns that don't have any, which is good, but they're gonna leave behind the towns that have partial coverage.
Yeah, and Comcast is eighty-ish percent?
Eighty, eighty, yeah, right around eighty percent coverage in this town. And the ARPA money that we have is certainly not enough to, to do the final twenty percent.
Yeah.
Um, so.
I did have somebody approach me after the meeting the other day, down from the interview, I wanted to know what we were doing about it, so it's out there.
I, I, and I don't know whether a letter from the selectmen to the executive committee, cause they're the ones that awards the, they're the ones that award the contracts. Maybe to the executive council or something like that, governor and council, or to our state reps and senators. Um, do we send a letter to them? I, I don't know. It's, it, I talked to the, um, rep from Comcast, it kind of floated that and he was, uh, they don't, they're not sure that, uh, sending it, uh, now is, is the best thing to do. They're not sure. They don't. Um, I think there's a lot of politics involved with all of this and I don't think, and my, I mean, my personal feeling is Comcast doesn't wanna rock the boat. They're hoping to get some of that money at the next round.
Yeah.
So, and, and, and maybe if we don't even mention Comcast, we've got, say, we're eighty percent covered from a, from a company already and it doesn't make financial sense to award it to one company and the last mile houses in a lot of these small towns are still going to go unserved if that's what the state does.
Yeah.
Cause either the co-op or Consolidated are gonna come into Canterbury and do the last mile.
Yeah.
Which doesn't have any money in it.
Yeah.
So we shouldn't get excited, huh?
Don't get excited, that's all. Sorry.
And, and gentlemen, make sure when you go to your meetings that, that you kind of make sure that they are taped minutes.
Yeah.
And that the, uh, there's a copy there, always sent to Jan's, so.
And agendas, we want agendas up there too.
Yes, yeah. And there's a, um, a good article in, in New Hampshire, Minnesota. Meetings, minute, meeting minutes, one-on-one, it's very, very helpful to some of the issues we've been having, what you put in and what, what is said, what is not said and how much you have to put in, you know, like when it's a hearing, uh. So that's?
That's relevant.
Yes, because we've had some very, uh, muffled minutes that a lot of the stuff is just too much, you know? So, so?
What else we got, anything?
Uh, Scott, you have?
HTC and energy.
HTC, you, you have?
I'll do both.
Oh, that's right, you want to do both. So I've got, please?
Oh, I get the CCPC too.
CCPC, yes. And a school rep, and?
I think, um, Howie's gonna be talking to you about coming in and talking to the selectmen at some near distant.
Yeah, he, he's, uh, uh, gonna be on the agenda for the next selectmen's meeting.
Okay.
Um, I talked to him today. He is going to send me, um, some information on mailings that are gonna be going out. And they're gonna be similar to, I think he named the town, I can't remember. Some towns already sent out mailings. Um, and he asked if, what, he asked if you guys would probably want that sent to town council for review. I, I said you probably would.
Yeah, absolutely.
So he's sending me a packet tomorrow. I'll forward it to you guys. If you have any concerns with it, let me know. I'll highlight it and I'll forward that, any information that you have, to council next week. And, uh, so that'll give you, if I get it tomorrow, I can forward it right off to you guys. And then that'll give you, over the weekend, maybe you can look at it real quick and, and see what's in there and then if you have any questions. I don't, I, the, the, the New Hampshire co-op, the one that's running this has, they, they run stuff before their council too. So I think everything's, I don't know that we'll, we'll have anything that's gonna be controversial.
I don't.
So.
HTC and H.
Yes, but I think that, uh, I think we typically, before we, before we do something like this, we'd like to run it by our town council because if there's anything at all that could be potentially legal issues, uh, they would be the ones to defend us. So we would send it to them, I believe, yeah.
And did we decide on any commotion? You did not. Hmm. But what have you got, Scott? You got the library and fire?
Fire, yeah.
Okay.
Did I get the library? Did you guys sneak that in on me?
No, no, we don't have a rep for the library.
No, well, it's a trustee's meeting, he, he?
Oh, yeah, we got it.
He, he got invited too.
That's just a one-off.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Just a orientation.
Yeah, and I don't know how often the ag commission meets and I can, uh, I'll talk to Mark Stevens.
Yeah, okay.
Just find out if, if he wants a?
If he wants a selectmen's rep.
If he wants a selectmen's rep.
Or would he like to come into our meeting? You know, like?
Yeah.
To update us at any point in time and if so, get on the agenda. I think that's really important with all of these different committees.
Lois is really good about the solid waste and historic.
Right.
Could be HTC.
Right.
Planning board.
She's really good with the ones.
She's a main event.
I don't know if we could talk to her and get her to do some more or not.
Good luck.
No, she told me already, no.
Yeah, I think she starts the slide.
And next meeting, um, will you have the appointment slips for the different?
I will try, I'm leaving Friday.
Going all Canada? Uh. You go?
We'll, we'll go, I'll, I'll have them for the next meeting.
Okay, good.
These have to go back to Sam, right?
Well, after you?
The appointment slips, yeah.
And afterwards. And then we can discuss all the appointments. And, and take care of any, um, thank you letters. And are we missing any committees?
Cemetery trustees.
There. No, no.
No?
No, no, we don't.
Is Sam giving, is he sending you?
He not, he?
He sends us the agenda and then the minutes, yeah.
I mean, I sit on that anyways.
And he normally updates us if there's anything big going on when he's in here for his normal thing. And you can, if you want, it keep you busy.
I know. It's not gonna be like last year, now.
No, no. Do I have to pack lunch and go in the school? Do I have to pack the lunch?
Yeah.
No. It'll be interesting to see how they work the, the, the school board, what they come up with. Because I know they're gonna change a few things on the committee. So, dancing.
Um, just real quick, for Scott, um, NHMA provides, uh, training for newly elected officials.
Okay.
So, um, I'll send you their latest.
That would be great.
Link.
Yeah.
And you can get on their email list and it's, they, they send something every week, the?
Yeah, he can get this, and you?
Yeah, you'll get a copy of that.
You can either get it by mail or digital, whichever.
That's good.
That way you can read it after you, sure?
Yeah.
Is there anything else?
Well, we probably gotta go into executive session on this welfare thing, or is that?
Only if you, if you need to. I, I?
I know what it is.
I don't, I don't, I don't. I think we should.